And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. Like our meeting to order today, begin with the approval of the minutes of April thirteenth and April twentieth.
I should do approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll begin with commissioner reports and comments. Vice President Baker, would you begin?
Sure. Good morning to everybody. Good morning to everyone that's participating in our meeting this morning. And the only thing I'd like to bring up, I remember a few, actually two things. The one is a few weeks ago, or months ago, brought up about Mr. The Mur Balls that were doing the demolition over here on Jonathan Street and just through his experience and knowing what to do when he come across those old logs that could possibly be the oldest logs in the country, in a home. I know I've asked, I've asked to try to get some support from our local historical groups, but I'd just like for possibly maybe get a consensus for the commissioners to put together a certificate and possibly provide to the Mur Balls, thanking them for saving a very important structure and a piece of history in Washington County.
There's been some Facebook stories about that location, so maybe we can work behind the scenes and get some.
At least get a certificate for the Mur Balls and maybe invite them in to present it to them. I'd really appreciate that if I could get the support from the commissioners on that.
I'm good.
Yep.
We'll do that. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, either deer or on location.
Maybe on location would be even better, be good publicity for that. Very good.
That'd be a great, great thing. And I had a second thing, and it's a skip of mine. Hopefully by the end of the meeting, it'll come back.
Will you gladly interrupt us? Thank you, Terry. Commissioner Kiefer?
I have two items. One, as the commissioners know, the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 150 was established to represent the deputies, in particular, the sheriff's deputies here in Washington County. And I know they are asking commissioners for assistance in helping with some payroll deductions like we do for other union employees, I assume, and for other reasons for their union membership. And I hope that could be an agenda item for maybe next week, if at all possible, so we can help with that effort. You know, as we know, and as we talked about, police officers are under scrutiny. And some legislation came out through Annapolis that was less than favorable. And has been talked about more legislation that might even be even more or less favorable for police officers. So it's important that they have some representation, I believe, and I would support an effort to assist them with their payroll deductions.
How about a consensus that we get on our agenda next week?
I'm good.
And I think I've asked John to get some documents put together so we know what to vote on and approve, okay?
Yeah, I mean, staff is looking, this is something we don't do on a regular basis. You're right, we do do it for the union, the existing union now, because we have a collective bargaining agreement with them. And we do do that. We don't do that for any other, any other groups. So if that's a consensus to the board, staff can do that. I don't know if we'll have all the paperwork done, because this, we're gonna have to create this process.
We'll have enough to maybe move forward or something with the review.
Right, and I think that, I think the representative from the FOP said he'd be happy to sit down with our staff and talk about. Because there are a lot of questions about, you know, there'll have to be paperwork about, you know, they'll have to sign to say they're okay taking out payroll deductions and how often the checks are issued and all those kind of details have to be worked out. So if it's a consensus of the board to do that, and your staff will get ahold of Kevin, and we'll try to get the details and then we'll bring that back to the board for consideration.
Wayne, something else?
One more item, I just wanted to comment on a recent Herald Mail news article titled, "BOE Praises Hancock Middle Seniors' Accomplishments", referencing to some of those student accomplishments that happened in Hancock, Hancock schools in general. I believe there was an accomplishment also at the elementary school. The If I Were a Mayor contest was the regional winner in a statewide competition. And also, there was an academic team, I believe, with some high school students, and they won their competition as well. I think that goes counterintuitive a little bit to some of the information we heard about small schools. And in fact, it's proof that good things, really good things happen in small schools. And I, for one, am proud of the schools that we have in all of Washington County, Hancock as well. That's all.
Let me finish up my comment. I figured out my second comment. Colonel Douglas Strive, I can't remember if I asked staff to do a little research or if we're to do it on our own, just to provide some information on how that net road was named.
Right, you'd ask that and I know staff took a look at that, and I don't think we have any, we haven't been able to find out any information on how they, how they got that name.
Okay.
If we find out the information, we'll provide that to you. But staff has not been able to locate any information as to how that got named.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Burkett?
I've been really busy the last couple of weeks, including visiting Morgansville, Funkstown, Boonsborough, Worceville, and Dargan Fire Departments. And although these meetings were a part of my getting around the county to introduce myself, they also became an opportunity to reassure the departments that a tax cut does not constitute funding cuts. And I'm looking forward to getting out to more departments in the county really soon. Last Tuesday, Ole, our volunteer coordinator, asked me if I'd be available to go to Frederick to observe the new firefighter recruits during an actual live burning training. And I was impressed with the dedication of these men and women who put their lives on the line to keep us safe, including the danger involved in inch training for the job of a firefighter. And then finally, last Wednesday, I reached out to Hakers Town Mayor Keller in an effort to understand their side of this issue with the 911 payment. And during our conversation, Mayor Keller informed me that there had been an agreement made in 2019 for meetings between the county and the city to take place on a regular basis, and these meetings, for some reason, never materialized. And as I told Mayor Keller, the county and city should follow through with their agreement, and both parties should work together to resolve the issue. Also during that phone call, I gave Mayor Keller my word that I would do everything I could do to make sure that these meetings between county and city staff would start occurring on a regular basis, as agreed to. And yesterday, it looks like there was a breakthrough, and we will be meeting with city elected officials as early as next week.
I think, sorry, I think what we want to do is get back to going after all the communities like we're required to.
Yeah.
We also included Morgansville at one time, and then one time we did go up to Cascade. But it's important to get back and do all our meetings, and thank you for initiating that.
Just one final thing, just thanks to Commissioner Klein and Mayor Keller for following up my phone calls with an agreement to come together.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mr. Burkett? Commissioner Burkett?
Nope.
Commissioner Wagner?
I was, I attended a Boonsborough 26th Annual Fishing Derby and Pond Dedication for the Hawkins Grove Park Pond down in Schaefer Park. It was a nice event. The mayor was there, and Rich Hawkins, and just lots of people, and kids fishing, having a good time. I think, what's the Albert Powell Hatchery, I think that's what it's called, stocked two or three hundred trout and all pound or two-pound trout. And kids were catching fish and having a good time, so that was a nice event, and I want to thank Boonsborough for that. I also met with Kevin Clappert on the FOB. And I agree, I mean, I, my, due to the, like Commissioner Kiefer said, to the recent legislation, I mean, the police are under attack, and we gotta do everything we can to help them. So that sort of sums it up, in my opinion. Oh, and congratulations to the elected officials in Hancock. That's all I have.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good memory. I forgot that one.
All right, I think we all received an email last week. Through Sarah's work as CFO, we received our three double bond A ratings again. So that's all great news. It saves us a lot of money. Second, I did attend the swearing-in ceremonies for the new Hancock mayor and officials. So congratulations to all of them, and for those who had served and those who ran. Next Tuesday, May eleventh, is Washington County Gives Day. So please go to the Community Foundation website and select the calls or organization you wish to support or share it with your friends and colleagues. This past week is the Pittsburgh Institute of Aeronautics 10th Year Anniversary Celebration. Commissioner Baker and I were here, and we all voted to move that forward into an old building over there that leaked. And through their determination, they're in a brand-new facility over there and maybe need to expand one day. So that program, supportive job training, has been very important. And also wanted to notice that last week, we had a State Highway Workers Appreciation Day, and staff and several went out to sites just to give them a personal thank you. Sometimes our highway guys, through all types of weather, all times of the day, they too are instrumental in being essential employees. But that concludes my report. We will now go to any staff comments. Mr. Downing?
No comments at all.
Krista, and then I'll go to John last.
I do. John, can I steal your mic?
Sure.
I just wanted to remind all the citizens on how participation can be scheduled. Citizens are encouraged to submit a request via email to khart@wascow-md.net, or you may call 240-313-2204, at least 24 hours in advance of each meeting if you wish to participate.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Mr. Macarena.
Thank you, President Klein. Good morning, commissioners. I have a few things this morning. I do want to follow up on Commissioner Klein's comment about our highway department. I know there were some things on social media, just to recognize our highway department employees. So thank them for that. Have a couple of other things. Today is International Firefighters Day. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, county staff, and the citizens of Washington County, I want to thank all of our firefighters for their extraordinary commitment, courage, selfless service, and for all they do to keep our community safe. So thank you to all the firefighters in our community. It's also Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think actually today is Teacher Appreciation Day, which is in the middle of the week, so we're part of, almost in the middle of the week. So again, on behalf of the county commissioners and county staff and our citizens, we want to thank all the teachers for their continuing hard work and dedication to the youth of our community. So thank you to all those different groups, our highway department, our firefighters, and our teachers. So thank you for all that you do. The final thing I have today is I want to introduce Larry Etchison, our new Human Resources Director. He started with us yesterday. So I want to personally welcome Larry, and I wanted to have him come down and just introduce him today during the meeting.
Come forward.
I'm sure he'll be in front of you on official business here soon, but Larry, welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome, Larry.
Thank you very much, gentlemen and lady. It's a pleasure.
So again, this is the Board of County Commissioners, welcome to Washington County Government and to the County Commissioner meeting, and that'll be the, it's a cool seat today, it may not always be when you come with the commissioners, but, but welcome. We're happy to have you here.
Your first day was yesterday, correct?
My first day in the office, my first day was on the first, actually.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I'd been reading and doing a lot of deep diving before even coming on board.
You having fun yet?
Yes, absolutely. Very much.
That's very encouraging.
Lots of opportunities.
Anything you want to tell us about yourself?
Well, I'm absolutely honored to be here, so I really appreciate the confidence that you have in me and John and everyone. And I'm really looking forward to serving those that serve our citizens and taxpayers here in Washington County. So it's a real pleasure. I'm really looking forward to helping us continuous improve, continually improve. That's a big thing with me. It's always continuous improvement. If we're good, we can be great. We can be great, we can be outstanding. So it's really an honor to have that opportunity. But right now, I'm drinking from the fire hose, so I'm just trying to learn everything I can.
I'd just like to thank you and welcome the board. I think you'll do an awesome job. I think you have an excellent team up there to work with.
Very much.
And just, my only advice is just stay cool and calm, and there's no pressure on you, all the pressure's on Mr. Mur Ball. So thank you for coming to Washington County.
Well, I appreciate that, but you're supposed to take as much pressure as you can from your boss in your particular area, so that's fine.
There we go, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And before, and before Deb leaves, I said this last time, but I realized she was already out of the room. I don't want to thank Deb for, she served in the interim capacity for a long time. Kept a lot of balls in the air, and we really appreciate it. I just want to thank you publicly.
And Deb's the happiest lady on earth right now, because you're here.
I think that's very true.
She, yeah, I think yesterday you told me you were like on cloud nine when I was up there talking to you, so. So thank you, Deb, and welcome, Larry.
Thank you all.
Thank you both of you.
That's all I have, President Klein.
All right, I think next we're to convene is the Board of Health. Well, is Mr. Stoner outside anywhere? We can begin a little early, five minutes?
He should be. I was gonna say, he's double found out.
Does our new HR director know about the $25 penalty for not having this George Washington lapel?
He does not, he does not know that yet.
All right, we give you a mullet get on that. We give you a mullet.
He said that to me, too.
There you go.
Tax, tax, tax.
There we go. Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir. Next, I need a motion to go into convening as Board of Health.
Someone already make a motion? Motion to move into the Board of Health.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? On favor, say aye, aye. Please introduce yourselves and the matter.
Good morning, commissioners and county staff. Earl Stoner, health officer at the Health Department.
Dan Triplett, Administrator for the Health Department.
And I think first on the agenda is, we are presenting to you to get approval to award a one-year extension of our Medicaid contract that we have for taxi ambulance service. We have a contract currently with AAA. The Maryland Department of Health is in the process of implementing a statewide, basically, broker system to handle all aspects of this program. They've been talking about it for a couple of years. Obviously, with the pandemic that we're currently in, that has kind of sidetracked the discussions at the state level. So they're asking all of us to do a one-year extension to our contracts.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, is that a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up?
And then next is to authorize me as health officer to enter into an MOU with the county related to vaccine hesitancy. We have about, I think it's three, a little over $300,000, $300,000, $304,000, $30420 set aside for a vaccine hesitancy campaign, basically to get people vaccinated. It will be along the lines of the masking campaign and the behavioral health campaign, campaigns that we've previously done. But this one will be really targeting, you know, individuals in the community who may be hesitant or taking a wait-and-see approach, or hopefully will serve to convince some other people who don't want to be vaccinated at all to get vaccinated. Because we are in sorely, we are sorely, sorely plateaued and really declining in our vaccination rates. We're about 27% right now. We've been hanging around that 27% mark. And we just, we have to get more people vaccinated, or we're gonna continue to see what we're seeing now. Like outbreaks pop up here and there, and we're never gonna get out of the pandemic. So this would be to authorize me to enter into agreement with the county.
So that means you're gonna be offering us cash incentives to get vaccinated? Isn't that what the governor's doing?
I'll put another $500,000 on there and come out of the county coffers.
That is what the governor's doing. That is what the governor's doing. $100 an employee ticket.
Yeah.
Should've waited.
And this would be, this really would be a media campaign to complement some of the things that we're already doing. Really, we're at a stage now where it's a ground game, and we are going out to, from a, from a mobile perspective, we're going out to every place that we can think of. Some of those places, it's 10, 15 people here and there. But if you look at national trends, that's unfortunately where we're going. It's gonna be very time-intensive, it's gonna be very resource-intensive, but we are, we are stalled. I mean, frankly speaking, we are, we're stalled here at under 30%. And if we don't get anywhere near the 70%, we're, we're not gonna be in a good position.
Is there vaccination, I heard there was none today anywhere in Washington County, except, is there clinics out today in Washington County?
Today, yeah, the mass vaccination clinic is open. The pharmacies are, basically, I think all pharmacies in Washington County are receiving vaccines now.
Are they, are they, what's the stats for people not getting their, showing up for their second shot?
We're, we're pretty good. You know, nationally, it's about 8%. We're roughly around there. We're not doing bad. We just don't have very many people coming in to get their first vaccine or even the single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson at this point. So, but the people who were originally given a first dose, most of those individuals are coming back. I mean, not all, but most of them are.
Earl, you say we are at 30%?
We're, we're at 27.1% fully vaccinated.
Just curious, how does that compare to other counties that might share demographics, being rural?
Pretty much the same. Yeah. I mean, you can look at, I mean, even nationally. You've got the more rural conservative populations that are looking, basically mirroring what we're seeing. Then you have the more suburban and urban populations that have, have higher vaccination rates. So we're, we're basically mirroring what we see in rural communities across the country.
The $300,000 for this campaign, it comes out of, I'm assuming, federal stimulus money of some sort or federal.
This comes out of.
FEMA money? This is, this is a FEMA reimbursement advance grant.
Okay, and can it only be used for marketing? Is, is that the only purpose of this money? I'm just wondering, is that the most effective way to use this funding? Many of the people I've spoken to, it seems like they already have their mind made up. And I'm wondering if an advertisement they may see on television or in the newspaper or on Facebook is going to change minds?
This is, this is just a portion of the money that we're getting. We got, we received the money to basically broadly deal with vaccination and testing issues. As part of that, we carved out this $300,000 to basically do the media campaign, you know, social media and that sort of thing. But we're also continuing with this money to support pretty intensive mobile vaccination, basically going out, you know, to Hancock, to, you know, faith-based organizations anywhere we can, but also using it to really, hopefully, establish a program, almost like an ambassador program, where we have trusted individuals within each of these population centers or these zip codes or communities that are really like looked upon as community leaders that can tackle just what you're saying. Those individuals that really are staunchly against, you know, being vaccinated. And honestly, some of those people were never gonna change. It just kind of is what it is. But we've got to pull out basically all the stops from the ambassador campaign with trusted leaders in the community to providing access equitably to those individuals, to just a broad level. You know, this is vaccination, you know, safe and effective, having individuals, you know, of color for our communities of color in those advertisements. Having individuals that live in the western part of the county and the southern part of the county in those. I know Commissioner Klein is gonna be featured in, and actually, I think they're already out, featured in some of the advertisements and the social media things that we're gonna be doing. So to address what you were saying, yes. I mean, I think the biggest part of it is, we've got to make sure that it's front and center. When you look at individuals and changing minds, it's not necessarily just one thing. It's seeing it, it's hearing it, it's having a person who may have been infected, may have been, had a death in their family. It's a multitude of things that we need to do in order to hopefully change as many minds as possible.
Commissioners, any more?
I have a couple more questions. I've had various calls on people that are on certain medications. Do y'all have a list of the medications that if an individual's on that, they have to have doctor approval before they can get the shot?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any list of medication. The only, again, that's an individual decision between their doctor and the individual. But the only thing that I'm aware of that would really preclude, outside of some sort of severe history of a severe allergic reaction, is having another immunization within two weeks of getting the COVID shot.
So if someone that's on, someone shows up, they're not gonna ask them what medications they're on or anything like that? And then be denied for certain medications that they are on?
No.
Okay. And then the other one is blood, or blood clots. I know I've had some people call me, well, not people, a person, call me concerning blood clots.
Yeah, Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was paused for about, what, two weeks? There was, there were 15 cases nationally of a clotting issue. And not necessarily just a clotting issue, but a thrombosis with that, which made it kind of like ultra-rare. So the bottom line is, is that the CDC, FDA, and the, there's a committee, ACIP committee that meets specifically about immunization recommendations. They met, looked at all the data, and basically didn't really find a true causal, you know, cause and effect. But they did agree to put a warning label on Johnson &amp; Johnson. Again, I'm not aware of any, you know, since it's been up and moving forward again in the last week, I'm not aware of any new cases nationally.
And we haven't had any locally.
We have not had any locally now.
And Johnson &amp; Johnson is the only vaccine that's had any.
Johnson &amp; Johnson is the only one that's being utilized in the U.S. AstraZeneca, which is being utilized in Europe, has had a similar issue with some clotting. But it's not, that's not authorized for use in the U.S. at this point in time.
Have you noticed any resistance to, now that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is back online, people coming in and refusing that vaccine, or?
A little bit, but not as much as I anticipated now.
And then the cost. If I go to a vaccine, vaccination facility, is there a cost?
The vaccine is free. They can charge your insurance for an administration fee. But like anything out of pocket, you don't pay anything out of pocket. It's a federal program and a federally supplied vaccine, so it's, the vaccine itself is free.
So the bottom line, 27% that's been vaccinated, you need about 70%?
Yes.
Commissioners, any comments?
I do have another question. I've read somewhere where we have just drop-in vaccination sites. Are those cost part of Maryland's cost, Maryland's footing that bill? And then if so, are we getting people from West Virginia, Pennsylvania, can any, you know, I mean?
Yes, yes. I would say it's a, I can't speak for the state, but I would say it's a combination of state funds and federal funds. I know speaking for us, we're a combination of the two, but predominantly federal funds. Until recently, we had, our preference and our priority were for people who live and work in Washington County. We've recently, over the past week, loosened up on that because frankly, we're not filling appointments. But to answer your question, yes. I know that at the Mass Back site, about 10% of the people that have gone there are from out of state. And about 20% from Washington County. The biggest portion is Montgomery County at about 35% at the, at the Mass Back site.
Well, the good thing is, it's not affecting any of the Washington County residents or citizens.
No, not at this point.
No one's being denied.
No.
Earl, one, another question. 27.1%. What would the percent be? And as you know, I'm not a scientist, I don't run the Health Department, I don't have a medical background. But someone who's recovered from COVID, I would assume have the same, maybe even better antibodies in their system than someone who's received the vaccine. What would that percentage be if we counted those people who have recovered from COVID would have that immunity as a result, plus the vaccine? What would that rate be?
Probably close to, anywhere from 45% to 50%. But I would, again, I'm not a scientist, but in, in the research that I look at, the, it's showing that the vaccination, the antibodies that you develop from vaccination are far more robust than antibodies developed through natural infection. So, but 45, 50% combined.
All right, any more questions? Call for a motion to exclude the advertising?
Motion to support the recommendation as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further questions?
Just one more comment, I support this. As, as we shared in an email chain, I was contacted by one of our small-town newspapers. I'm just making sure that that reach, if there is media print advertising that, I believe we, in addition to the Herald Mail, the Citizen newspaper in South County, and the Hancock News also serves Washington County. So if we could make sure we spread those resources, it would help us reach all parts of Washington County even better. So include our smaller media sources. And that might be true for television as well.
Yes, we, we were, we're not, we're pulling out all the stops. Everybody will be involved.
Okay.
Hey, I have a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Um, next, I need a motion to reconvene is the Board of County Commissioners.
Motion to reconvene is the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, welcome back. Introduce yourself and the matter.
Earl Stoner, Health Officer at the Health Department.
Dan Triplet, Administrator, Health Department.
So then is this me or?
I was gonna say, so, so, so what's, so what's happening now is now you're looking for Board of County Commissioner approval to enter into this MOU. So what you did before is you authorized Earl to sign on behalf, on his behalf. And now
Thank you for the explanation.
So now you're, so now you're on the other side of the agreement. Sorry, that technically had to be that way, so.
All right, commissioners, any comments? Motion to approve as the Board of Commissioners?
Motion to approve as the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Mr. Triplet, you talk too much.
I, I've been told that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good day to you all.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda, a little early, is Chris Boggs in the neighborhood?
Hey, Chris.
Morning.
Good morning. Next on our agenda, the Baker Rural Legacy Program easement. Mr. Boggs, please introduce yourself and the matter.